Welcome to the Marshfield Zoning Board of Appeals Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 meeting. This is a hybrid meeting, so if you're dialing in, please use star six to mute and unmute yourselves. Heidi, you out there?
Heidi's not coming.
Oh, Heidi's not coming. And Grover said he'd be late. I don't know if that means he's coming on Zooming. So we don't have to do a roll call because we're all here. And we're gonna take one thing out of order. The Marshall Commerce Way LLC discussion and vote on requests of insubstantial change to subsidizing agency from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership and to Mass Housing. You here for that?
Yeah, I'm here. This is Debbie Horowitz.
Oh, hi Debbie. So just name and address for the record and then let us know what you're doing.
Yep, Debbie Horowitz for Goldstone Stores in Boston. I'm here representing the owner of the development and the request for insubstantial change.
Okay.
What exactly is the change?
It's simply a change in subsidizing agency. If you remember when we first, it's been a while, when we first came in with the application, our project eligibility letter was from Mass Housing Finance Agency. And then during the course of getting ready for construction, we came in for an insubstantial change to change that subsidizing agency to Mass Housing Partnership. Mass Housing Finance Agency has now changed their requirements for financing. So we would like to switch back to Mass Housing Finance Agency. There's no change in the actual project itself.
Thank you.
Why, do you have anything to offer?
Nope, I agree it's insubstantial change.
All right, so what do we just?
Move to close?
Yep.
It's actually not even a public hearing, it's just a written request, so.
Okay, I vote that it's an, that it is an insubstantial change.
Second?
Larry King, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys, I appreciate your doing that.
So now we have 2523 Equitable Development LLC. Are you here? The petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 3051103 of the Marshfield Municipal Code for an amount of fill equivalent to 500 cubic yards or more and 10,000 square feet of land of disturbance and site plan approval 3051202 to construct a 60-foot by 80-foot building, the north side of which will have 60 feet wide asphalt drive connecting a 40-foot by 40-foot heliport. Two 28-by-18-foot underground subsurface, can't say the word, catchment, systems on the property located at 91 Old Colony Lane, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel K080201. It's located in the R2 zoning district. Go ahead. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Timothy Twardowski of Robinson &amp; Cole in Boston, representing the applicant, Equitable Development LLC. As the notice points out, we are here for a special permit for fill as well as site plan review. The proposed helipad use is a permitted use in the zoning district. The zoning of this property is actually in the airport district, it's not in the R2 district. So the proposed use as a heliport is in fact listed as a permitted use within the district. So the reason for the special permit again is the fill and also we're here for site plan review. With me this evening is Josh Green from Crocker Design Group, who is the engineer for the project. I would like to kick it off to him to just give a brief overview of the project and then turn it back to the board. With any questions, we're happy to respond and address any specific issues that the board may have in response to the board or board members of the public.
Go ahead.
Just giving a shot of hearing it. Let's state it, Josh Green, Crocker Design Group. Property is 91 Old Colony Lane. It's located on the eastern side of Old Colony Lane. It's surrounded on three sides by the Marshfield Airport. Under existing conditions, there is a two-story wood frame building on the property with vehicular access via gravel driveway coming off Old Colony Lane. Utilities just in front of the existing structure come off Old Colony Lane connecting to the structure itself. There is a FEMA flood elevation nine on the property that goes from Old Colony up to the southeast corner. The north side of the property is predominantly wooded under existing conditions, with the south side being the developed portion of the property. There are two recently exercised easements from the airport shown here as well as here. So those are in effect now, those kind of the reason for the recent remedal, just to get the work outside of those. Moving on to demo. The project itself will essentially start with a clean slate, clearing the areas for proposed development. The existing structure itself will be demoed. Driveway, landscape features, hardscapes, those will all be cleared out for the development. Utilities will be cut and capped at the property line for future use. And then erosion controls will be placed on the down gradient side of the proposed project to prevent siltation or erosion of the abutting areas. One thing I would like to note, the applicant did apply to historic, received the demo delay, and the demo delay has lapsed. So believe, I'll defer to Andrew after, but believe that was all clear on that side.
Have you tried to find another purpose for the house or another rehome it?
For the.
Give it to the house shelter, I don't know, I mean.
Nobody's reached out, as far as I know, on it.
Well, does anybody know?
I'm not sure.
That they could have a house for a dollar? You put anything on the forum? The Marshfield Forum, it's on Facebook?
I'm not sure, we can look into it.
Yeah, Cindy Castro mentioned that she might want to try and save the structure or elements of the structure. I realize that it's not, the plaque on the front is inaccurate.
Yeah, it's not from the 1600s.
It's from the 1800s, so. Just something to think about.
Okay, I'll put it under consideration.
So it's not the Josiah Winslow?
No, it's not.
It's a Josiah Winslow?
I guess it is.
It was his cousin.
Yeah. They have the historical information on it.
Okay.
I mean, they should have, I think it's in a package.
Did you see the letter from the Historical Commission folks?
During the original hearing when the?
No, they just submitted a letter that I saw today.
I did not see a recent one.
They said that there was some communication back and forth, they did some research. Turns out the house isn't from the 1600s, but rather the 1800s. And there was some communication and then the communication stopped, so.
Yeah, I have not seen that.
It just, it just.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Yes, Cindy wanted to provide some background on the Historical Commission's part.
Perfect.
We're gonna be looking for time extension and engineer review as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll pass it one year though, right, correct? Yeah, we'll.
Oh yeah, that's all taken care of.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
Okay. I think that was about it on demo. Moving on to the proposed conditions. As far as the site layout itself, there will be a 60-by-80 hangar building located in the middle of the property. It'll get its vehicular access from a driveway in a similar location to the existing driveway with three spaces on the outside of the building, two interior dumpster and walkway located here just for trash removal. On the north side of the proposed hangar building, there is a paved apron that goes down to a 40-by-40 helipad. Is now under the revised drawing, it has a retaining wall on essentially three sides of the helipad. Last one is just the fence will be on the perimeter, FAA and security reasons for that.
So no, no connection by taxiway to other aspects of the?
No, no direct connection to the airport. Is that what? As far as utilities and drainage, start with utilities. Similar location to existing additions. Sewer comes off Old Colony Lane here and bends into the building. Due to the overhead doors, there will be floor drains, so an oil-water separator is proposed just to tie that into sewer. Water will come straight in off Old Colony, similar to the electric and telecom.
Is, are there gonna be bathrooms in the hangar?
Our understanding is there would be, it'd be something like a half bathroom, that type of situation.
Okay, it's not, it's not open to the public?
The exact end user isn't defined, but it wouldn't be, you know, just anybody can go there anytime. This is a security fence, you can't just get in.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah. Now, space in the hangar for three helicopters?
Two to three is what we expect for this use.
Do you have, do you have helicopters that are looking for space?
I'm not sure, I don't know of an end user yet. I'd have to defer to the applicant on that one.
Yeah, I know Plymouth is full up, so.
So I can certainly pass that along to the applicant, just see if he can reach out to them. But yeah, as far as like an actual end user, I don't, I don't have one right now. I think, just to quickly cover stormwater, there are three subsurface systems to reduce the peak rate for the property, either to match existing additions or drop it below the peak discharge rate. One system handles the parking area. It's collected by a catch basin, goes into an isolated row on that first flush to provide treatment and then larger flows will go into the rest of the system to provide infiltration. These two systems here take half of the proposed hangar building and half of the proposed helipad and apron. Again, same thing except for these are conveyed by a trench drain, goes down, isolated row for that first flush of treatment, rest of it goes into the infiltration system. I think with the last thing, I just want to make sure, related to the fill application. The building is, the elevation of it is governed by building code, we have to be two feet above the flood elevation of the building. And then because of FAA's design guidelines, we can only gradually slope down to the helipad. So we only gain about six inches on average of drop to the helipad. So this is all kind of a fixed elevation. So it's not like we're looking for extra fill here. It's just, it's, it's part of that use. We're required to have these elevations and the fill's just part of that coming off of those elevations.
And did you see Andrew's note about the structure, the design of the structure and the elevation?
I don't think I saw that, did he issue that on the?
Briefly, he mentioned, "The new building code requires the structure to be elevated an additional foot above what is proposed, which would require more fill. If not elevated higher, the structure would need to be dry floodproofed. So as proposed, the structure's not compliant with Mass Flood Resistant Design and Construction Standards."
Is Andrew on?
Brian, can I, can I comment on that real quick?
Yes, please.
So as I also mentioned at the end of my comments, I have not had the time to review their updated revised plans. But as I'm, you know, reviewing them and putting them up on screen, the slab elevation right here at 11.0, that does meet the current building code for two feet above the elevation, which I believe is 89 in this, in this location, right? So that, I believe that slab elevation, I believe these revised drawings do address those concerns, which I also raised, you know, the same issues during the Conservation Commission hearings so that they were aware of this aspect. I just have not had the opportunity to actually revise, review these revised drawings before this meeting.
Thank you.
I think with that, I'd turn it over to the board.
Any questions? Andrew, do you have anything to add or? Andrew? Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Andrew? All right, so does anyone from the board have anything to add?
Yeah, it looks like you plan on removing quite a bit of the trees, woodland area there right off of Old Colony. Is there any intention of landscaping that, putting in any type of buffer?
Ideally, we. We would. Right now, we haven't worked out the exact landscape plan.
That's not what this proposal here?
If you're flying a helicopter, I don't think you want a lot of trees around.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be right up to the roadway either, you know?
You also don't want a lot of dust, yeah.
Originally, I think we did have more and we had to scale it back because of the regulations. We were essentially trying to keep it from, the landscape from that way.
Yeah.
So there will be fencing, I believe they can have solid.
It's just gonna be an open fence off of Old Colony, you're gonna be looking right in at the helicopters.
We can look into a solid fence, something that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what's currently shown on the plans is chain linked with privacy slats, but we'd be willing to look at other options.
I was thinking of something that could be a noise buffer for the residents that are right there, something that they're not looking straight across at a big steel building.
To your point, Larry, maybe like a solid fence?
A solid fence.
Solid fence, and I don't know if such a product, product is manufactured, but a solid fence with like, I don't know, insulation, like, you know, like.
Along the side of the expressway.
Like hollow?
Yep.
Things filled with like noise deadening thing, I don't know. I just thought of this as I'm sitting here tonight, but something like that might, might help with the noise. And of course, you know, with a helicopter, there's a lot of noise when it's landing and taking off, but other than that.
Yeah, they wouldn't be.
Definitely quiet.
My question, with no direct access to the taxiways, then the approach path has to be fairly well-defined to land on this helipad.
I believe that is part of the FAA process, is coming up with that.
All right, so, I mean, part of the, part of my consideration is where is that flight path? You know, whose house does it go over? How does it, you know, how does it come in?
It comes, they, it comes in, there's like a flight path for helicopters. I've flown in and out of there in a helicopter once and the pilot knew what to do and where to go.
Yeah, but not, 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 not here.
Well, not to this specific location, but it was, you know, 100 yards away.
Yeah, but you, you, I've been a pilot most of my life and I know that you can land a helicopter on any surface, right? But typically, you land it on the runway or get it closed and get it to a taxiway, and then you follow the taxiway to where you want to park it. This, with no access to the taxiways, you're gonna have to land it on the helipad. And that's it.
Yeah.
Then you can move it in the hangar and move it out. So how does it get onto the helipad? Over, over what structure? It's not gonna be flying over the taxi, over the actual taxiways.
My guess is it would come in, and you guys can clarify this, it's gonna come in over the airport and then like take a turn just over the airport property. I, I don't imagine it would be coming in over the neighborhood, like over the pizza place.
That's an imagine, right? So I just, I want, I want, I'd like to, I'd like to know that.
We'll do it.
Bob, are there rules in place for?
Bob can't talk.
Oh, okay. Does anyone know are rules currently in place for a helicopter to come into the Marshfield Airport? And if they can, are they allowed to utilize the airport's landing pattern?
Yeah.
And go over L-shaped that way?
Yeah, I can't speak directly to that, to that question. You know, I would say that, you know, obviously we would be subject to FAA regulations and to the extent that that's part of their jurisdiction, which certainly it is. You know, all flights entering and exiting the heliport would certainly be in compliance with FAA rules.
Thanks.
How many people in the audience are here to speak on this? All right, so we're gonna wanna hear from the audience. Whoever wants to go first, come up to the podium, name and address.
Brian, if I could just really quickly, you asked if I had to comment?
Yeah.
Problem of muting. I would just say, you know, I gave my comments, my written comments, but again, I have not reviewed all this stuff other than just what's, what's up on the screen.
Well, we're gonna need an extension for time, we're gonna need to hire an outside engineer to review this. And I think from the attorney we used in John Witten, he said that he could only think of two companies that do the aviation review. So that's, we're gonna have to find that, you're gonna have to put money in and account for that. But let's hear from the audience first before I get into that. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Johnson-Cott, I lived at 76 Old Colony Lane. It's almost right across the street. So yeah, we're very concerned. You know, I'm sure that you guys have been to the site.
Yes.
Okay, so everybody has been? And you've seen how close the helipad will be to the road?
Mm-hmm.
Very close.
Too close, dangerous.
You know, our concern is, you know, it's a dead end road. The condos are there, it's not just our houses. And, you know, there's, people take walks to the airport, they bring their kids, young kids, and they ride their bikes. So, you know, we're concerned. I mean, the average velocity of a helicopter, the wind speed on a helicopter at takeoff is 54 miles an hour, I think? So I mean, it's enough to blow kids off bikes and.
It's a beautiful little residential place. They've yet to say that we're smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood.
Yeah, no one says that.
The airport is down the end and the runway is way out there, but this is right in front of our home. It is a terrible, horrible idea. It will benefit no one in the neighborhood, absolutely no one, it would only benefit them. There are a lot of concerns, the airport is dead against it. I have numerous signatures from tons of people in the neighborhood, I wish they were gonna show up. But I have a ton of that that I've accumulated. It's really just a horrific idea environmentally, noise pollution, air pollution.
I mean, home values will plummet.
It would be catastrophic, there's animals there, there's deer, there's all sorts.
It's a migration pathway for.
It's just, it'll be destroying a lovely neighborhood.
I mean.
There's no place for it.
We talked about this before, but, you know.
They should go far, somewhere far away.
The box turtle migrates there too. But, you know, we're just, we don't want to see it happen, so.
We'd like to do everything in our power to not let this happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we can. With all of your help, let's meet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's, hey, I mean.
Oh, go ahead, review your notes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm John Martin, I'm at 86 Old Colony, directly across, been there 45 years, seen it all. I have nothing against helicopters, believe me, I was aviation chief for 20 years. I flew helicopters to that airport and walked across the street to go home when South Weymouth was open. All right, so I know all about your helicopters, it's fine, it's just the wrong place. If you put that helipad, and I'm directly across, that's 75 feet, it's 150 feet across, that means that center, the airport, the helipad's gonna be 75 feet from the road. That puts you about 130 feet to my front door. That's like the, if you were down in the veterans office down there, the helicopter landing out in your driveway, I mean, in your parking lot out there. That's basically it. The noise is outrageous. Then you have the rotor wash, prop wash. Where's all that stuff gonna be blown? Oh, well, you're gonna put a fence up, well, that's great, the only trouble is you're putting a 10-foot elevation. So what are you gonna put, a 20-foot fence? I mean, it's crazy, it's just the wrong spot to have it. I was talking to, this afternoon at 1:00, the turkeys came by, like they said. The turkeys are there, the deer are there, I don't know about the turtles, I gotta tell you, I never saw a turtle. You know? But it is a migration path. And they even made it, well, the airport made it hotter when they extended the runway for them to come around, but they still do come around and go down behind the condos back there, all that wooded area where the drive-in used to be many years ago. You know, I mean, it's just, like I said, I've got nothing against them, it's just the wrong place to do it. Too much noise, too much everything. And again, like I said, the elevation, where's all that water gonna go? Oh, we're gonna put French drains in. Well, that's fine, that's the water coming off the building. What about the water that's landing on the ground? And it has to go somewhere. You know, it's wrong place, guys, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I would question, this, this obviously is closest to the operations center, to the office. So my guess is that's the reason to locate it here. If you looked, because it's not a small parcel that the airport's located on. Have you looked at other locations on the airport land, the land that's under your control to locate this so that it's not as close to the residences?
Say that that parcel is what's under our control.
I'm sorry?
That parcel is what's under our control.
I think he's asking if you could take the H pad and move it to the other side farther away from the residences?
This section of.
Yeah, Andrew, can you pull up that, the photo of the airport again?
This is, that's all.
Google Earth?
Yeah, we don't know that, just what's in yellow.
The town owns the airport and leases it to a company. They are proposing development on a private parcel outside of the airport property.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the town.
This has nothing to do with the town-owned airport property or the company that leases that property from the town.
And would therefore not be subject to the Airport Commission?
Nope.
No.
Private.
This is a totally private property separate from that other parcel.
All right, who's next?
Okay, so, so, Andrew, thank you for clarifying that, so as a practical matter, the only place this applicant can put that helipad is where, is what's presently in front of us. Because the applicant doesn't have control over the airport, that's town land and it's not going there.
They only control their parcel.
Okay. And just so the abutters know.
Airport, the airport district is this, is this zoning thing here that says A, right? And within that, you have the town-owned parcel. You have these, this wetland parcel out here, which is also town-owned. You have the existing condo complex there. And the only other parcel in the airport district is 91 Old Colony, which is privately owned, which they are here tonight proposing to do this development on that parcel.
Thank you, Andrew, that gets.
Separate from any other parcel or airport operation in the district.
Thank you, that gets to my point, that what they're proposing to do for the benefit of the abutters under the zoning bylaw is to take a non-conforming use and make it conforming. So that shifts the burden of proof in the, what the applicant needs to demonstrate, that they're taking something that is non-conforming, they're making it more conforming by making it conform to zoning. So it's not as though they're expanding a pre-existing non-conforming use. The assumption is they're entitled to the relief they seek versus they need relief from this board. They do need relief, obviously, for the fill, but the use is an allowed use as of right.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
Hi, Joe Pacificus Wilson Road. Could I, could I ask that some research be done on the, how that this existing subject locus is, became in the A-zone? There was a house there since the 1600s or 1700s? No, the core of the house goes back to the 1600s.
Right, it was pieced together from what the.
And then it was, it was glommed onto.
Right.
It's like an accretion of four different additions. How in the world did a parcel with a house on it get included in the A-zone when the town voted to establish that? That's really interesting. The rest of the area was pretty much open, open space at that time. And it just doesn't sound reasonable that they would have included that parcel in an A-zone. As far as, so I'd like to see some work done to research that to make sure that's clarified. Question, looking at the sketch of the site layout, I see like a sort of a tan-colored building, a tan-colored rectangle, I assume that's the hangar? That's in the middle of the smocus? And access to the helipad is through the hangar building? Is that correct?
From people or the helicopter?
Is, to get to the helipad, you have to pass through the hangar building?
Technically, you can get around the building if you're walking, like the fence is closer to the property line.
Well, for service vehicles and cars and ambulances and bicycles and everything else, how would you get to the helipad, through the hangar building?
Generally, a person using it would go into the hangar first.
Well, I see no roadways or walkways or anything else designated. Seems like the only way to get to the hangar would be through, to get to the pad is through the hangar building. That, to me, is a real problem. What if emergency vehicles had to access a broken helicopter on that pad? How would they get to it? There's an embankment and a retaining wall and a fence. I see no gates on the fence or anything. I see no gates on the fence or anything like that. My next question is, how high is that hangar building? What's the height of that hangar building? I assume it's pretty high if you're gonna be storing helicopters in there.
Height's approximately thirty-one feet.
Thirty-one feet from grade?
Uh, by the height definition.
What's the height definition?
I don't have the definition.
Six feet off the, wherever the building is, um, with their retaining. So, I know, I get you, you're going ahead, oh, beyond that, it's gonna be taller.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know what the, what the, I don't see any cross-section here of, of this, uh, proposed development. Um, also, we have a helicopter pilot here, um, could the helicopter pilot maybe enlighten us on how a helicopter approaches a landing zone? Do they come vertically straight down out of the sky, or do they typically approach at a, with a certain pitch? Yeah.
I'm not a helicopter.
Oh, somebody said they flew out of it.
No, I flew, I flew from South Weymouth.
Okay. This is a pilot, at least...
He's a pilot, but...
Not a helicopter pilot.
But typically helicopters just don't like come down like an elevator. I mean, they, they do have to approach into the wind and, and they have to have a certain pitch, right?
Yes.
So, they could be approaching over the condos, they could be approaching over the people across the street, they could be approaching from any three-hundred-and-sixty-degree variance, variable angles.
Depending on the wind.
Depending on the wind, of course, and, you know, we know what the prevailing winds are there.
FAA has control of that.
Um, and we, every time it seems, not good, I just want to say something, I've run into this before, sometimes a proponent will say, "We're gonna comply with this, we're gonna comply with EPA, we're gonna comply with FAA, don't worry about everything, we're all gonna be in compliance," but they don't tell us what that means.
What that compliance is.
What that, what that translates to.
Well, that's why, Joe, we're going to be getting, um, aviation, an engineer and an aviation outside company to look at this.
So, those are, my initial concerns is, um, uh, what's the cross-section there? What's the access to that pad? Um, that's just for starters, thanks.
Thank you. And I would recommend that any of the abutters that have questions, maybe you could email those into Nancy so we can get answers for you, anything we don't get tonight. So, does anyone else want to speak? Anyone in the, uh, virtual audience? Seeing that there's none, I'll go into my spiel here now. All right, so I opened the hearing, we realized that required sixty-five day opening window, and I'm gonna request that the applicant grant the board an extension for the site plan review application so that the decision deadline for the site plan review application is coincident, or coincides to the decision deadline for the special permit application. As site plan approval, absent a special permit, is no value to the applicant. I'm hopeful that they will grant the board an extension so that the deadlines for the both decisions are the same. The other request I have is the applicant pay into the town's, hopefully I'm saying this right, forty-four, five, three G account, amount sufficient to retain engineering services that will be needed to review these applications. While stormwater and erosion control are clearly relevant, so too is the understanding to the impacts of the proposed project, a heliport and associated land activities and disturbances, including but not limited to noise, vibration, dust, lighting, fumes, and security and overall safety. Um, so then the other questions I would have is to hold off, uh, till the board, until we get the guidance, um, for the proposed use of the helicopters. For example, while their applications exist in frequent use in the application under their, uh, number three of their special permit, this seems illogical. Um, one doesn't spend this kind of money for something that, to be used infrequently. I think the board needs to, uh, needs assistance to understand the implications of every landing and takeoff before being able to determine how many trips, if any, should be permitted. Uh, additional issues that appear important to, at this point, the locus is burdened by several easements that appear to be held by the airport town, how do they impact the proposed use? What is the relationship between the proposed heliport and the existing airport? Will the FAA approve this combination of uses? Does the applicant possess the required licenses and approvals from the FAA and Mass. Department of Transportation? If not, what is the timeframe for applying for those approvals? Who will own and operate the heliport? This is a specialized field with specialized requirements, and it's, and it is reasonable to, and appropriate to know who his intended operator will be. What experience does the applicant and/or proposed owner-operator have in the running of an operation such as the pro, is proposed? What insurance coverage is required by the FAA or state? And does the applicant-owner-operator have financial capacity to secure such coverage? Finally, as we discussed, um, application, equitable development has been, uh, has filed a special permit, site plan review approval, underlying proposed use as a heliport, is identified in the permit of the table of zoning bylaw number eight, wholesale transportational industrial. Put otherwise, while they do not need the board's approval for the use, they do require the board's approval pursuant to three-oh-five, eleven-oh-three of the zoning bylaw to comply with their proposed fill operation, as well as two-oh-two of the site plan review. These requirements cannot be reviewed in a vacuum. Is the intended use of the heliport that deserves the board's attention? With the above noted zoning bylaw sections helping guide the analysis, um, and the board pronounce the use of the heliport, right, that the board's view limited to these two bylaw sections, that would be, uh, that wouldn't be correct. So, the board's analysis with, this is going to be proposed property, this board's evaluating these through the lens of two bylaw sections. Um, so, you, we're gonna need you to have an extension for time, first of all, we're gonna need you to put money into an account for the town so that we can get an engineer and an aviation expert to review everything you're proposing to us, and I'll have all those questions, uh, I'll give them to Nancy so that you can get those answers for us, and we'll also have questions in the audience, um, that we'll expect answers for as well. So, Nancy, what are we open for time to continue this meeting?
Uh, the next...
We're not gonna go to the next, it's gotta be at least two meetings out.
So...
July meeting is when?
Uh, we have two in June and one in July.
So, I'll go for the...
July is July eighth.
July twenty-eighth?
July eighth is the only, the only meeting we have.
The only meeting, yes, okay. So, we're gonna extend to July eighth. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Reverend Z, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
So, just so the audience understands, there'll be no more notification, but you know that on July eighth, we will be meeting on this project again, and please, um, get your questions into us so we can get them answered for you.
There, when you say there's no more notification, it's not, it's, the public meetings are posted...
Right.
So, you can find them on the town's website.
They will get notified, yeah.
Yeah, you will not get notified.
Personally notified.
But there, these are all public meetings, it's not like it's gonna be a helipad tomorrow morning.
Yeah. All right, so you guys good with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have twenty-five, twenty-four, William and Michelle Keys. The petitioner is seeking a variance in accordance with three-oh-five, ten-eleven of the Marshfield Municipal Code for relief from three-oh-five, six-oh-two and three-oh-five, six-ten, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulation, and a special permit in accordance with three-oh-five, ten-twelve to construct a thirty-foot by twenty-foot single-story addition at the rear dwelling on the property located at eighty-three Ashburn Avenue, which is further identified on the assessors' maps as being on parcel M zero-eight-two-nine-zero-three and is located in the R-three zoning district. So, before we get going, Andrew, do you have anything to offer us on this? Andrew? Trouble muting. There we go.
Sorry.
I understand.
I, I, no, eighty-three Ashburn?
Yes.
Let's, I, no, because like I said, I don't, I haven't met anybody regarding this, and I don't know anything about the project yet.
Okay.
Honestly.
All right, so go ahead.
Okay, um, how you doing, Ryan?
Good, how are you?
Um, we're looking to build an addition onto the back of our house for her father, my father-in-law, who is aging and, um, would like for him to move in with us instead of, 'cause he can't afford to go to a nursing home or anything like that, and he's got medical issues that we, um, you know, we just want him around family.
Right.
So, we just want a little addition off the back, just, you know, for a bedroom, bath, and a little sitting area.
He has a high-term upstairs, so it was like originally thinking, if he comes to our house, where's he gonna go?
Yeah.
Shower's upstairs, you know, the bedrooms are upstairs.
Right.
Not gonna work. He needs a one-level, and he needs to be close to family.
So, Andrew, now that you've heard the use, um, do you have an opinion, or?
Can I say something about this? By reading Andrew's notes here, had you met with Andrew at all?
I have, I have not.
They have not.
From what I'm reading here, you might wanna, before you go through this, you might wanna just meet with Andrew and go through, you may not even need to be...
That's what I'm waiting for him, but he, I'm having trouble with meeting and unmuting.
Building Commissioner?
The building commission.
Okay, okay.
Andrew, can you hear us?
He'll go through this all with you.
And, Ryan, it's just generally you let the people present their project and you hear their application to the board based on what their application was. I mean, if you guys, I gave you guys my written comments, like...
Right.
My expectation would be you let them present it, and then you would disseminate that information to them during your comments, but if you want to just have me tell them, right, you know, my opinion on this, honestly, like, yeah, I do, if, I think that if they had come and met with me, I could have helped them formulate something that they would never have had to even come to the zoning board of appeals for a variance or even a special permit, depending on what they wanna do. And, uh, like I said in my written comments, the sketch of the, um, connection from the house to this addition is just as breezeway, there's no, um, exterior view, so I don't know if this is a conditioned connection, or if it's an open breezeway, uh, all sorts of stuff, is there a kitchenette or anything in there? Is the purpose to do an ADU? If so, I mean, there are so many different questions and options there, so, like I would say with everybody, like, is in our rules and regulations for the ZBA, anytime an application is submitted, they're, you know, they're recommended to go to the, to the building commissioner to have a meeting before they submit an application.
Would you like to extend your time and meet with Andrew and see if, see if you can not have to go through this process?
Absolutely. I had no idea that we had, you know, I was, I was told that we had to put in for a special permit because it was gonna be so many feet off the lot line and stuff like that, so...
Okay.
I, I knew nothing about meeting with him or anything else, it's all...
Andrew, can you meet with them before our next meeting?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I'm available, uh, all the time. I'm not available for the next two days, I'm at a conference, but, uh, just call the building department, email me, um, schedule an appointment with me at any time to discuss any, anything that you wanna do on your property, and I'll set you on the right path and give you the easiest route to get to all the permitting processes.
So, do you want us to extend your meeting to the next meeting and then meet with Andrew?
Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, sure. I mean, if I, if I knew that, I would have done that.
You have to get around, you know, you got a variance here, you got some other things here that are a little tough climb.
Okay.
All right, Nancy, when's, when's our next meeting?
The twenty-seventh.
So, we'll put you on for the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
We'll continue to the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, uh, this month?
This month, yeah.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion to continue, um, twenty-five, twenty-four, eighty-three Ashburn to the twenty-seventh of, uh, May.
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Reverend Z, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck with Andrew. Um, so now we have, uh, oh wait, so Woodlawn Circle, what are we doing with them? They're gonna, they withdrew, right?
Yes.
So, twenty-five, twenty-five, Maria Fraley, eighteen Woodlawn Circle, petitioner is seeking special permit in accordance with three-oh-five, ten-twelve of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct a thirteen-foot by eleven-foot by fifteen-foot floor, three-foot by six-foot by nine-foot floor, single-story addition, seventeen-foot by forty-one-foot-six deck replacement on the property located at eighteen Woodlawn Circle, which is further identified as the assessors' maps as being on parcel, uh, one, uh, it's like I-oh-eight, oh-seven-oh-one is located in the R-B zoning district. So, they're looking to withdraw without prejudice. Nancy, is that correct?
Withdraw without prejudice, correct.
All right. Uh, so do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Reverend Z, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
All right, so now we have Hale Brothers Construction. The petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with three-oh-five, ten-twelve of the Marshfield Municipal Code to raise the existing dwelling and construct a new eighteen-foot by thirty-two-foot, two-and-a-half-story dwelling with an eleven-foot by eighteen-foot porch and a four-foot-six by forty-three-foot, um, deck, a four-foot by fourteen-foot deck and a three-foot by ten-foot deck on the property located at ten North Street, which is further located on the assessors' maps as being on N-zero-seven-zero-one-three-eight, and is located in the R-three zoning district. Go ahead, name an address for the record.
Was that Brian?
Oh, name an address for the record.
Oh, at the Hale, Hale Brothers Construction?
Yep.
We're just proposing to, uh, do a new home, um, my customer had bought this home with the intention of remodeling it. After several trips and looking at it with the engineer, it was not savable. So, we went through, talked to Cindy, we went through historical, got approved to tear it down, and then conservation approved last week for us to bring it up to code, driven pilots.
Right.
Um, what we did with the setbacks is, on the south side, we're gonna keep the same setback, we'd like to keep the same setback. On the beach side, we're actually gonna be less non-conforming. On north street, we're gonna be less non-conforming, and on the backside, we'll keep it the same. And, uh, Andrew asked for the midpoint, it wasn't on the drawings I gave you, it is on this drawing right here, thirty-five feet to the midpoint. That's basically it.
All right.
It is there. It's there, it's there.
All right, so we have your, um, your notes, Andrew, we have your notes, Bob, does anyone have anything to add to this? Is there any questions from the audience?
Just a comment, uh, my name's Neil Duffy, seventeen Bryant Lane, I'm, I'm the next-door neighbor.
Yep.
So, I just wanna meet you, say hello, and...
Yeah.
Good luck, looks, looks like, looks like a nice house.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I respect that your client wanted to try and keep it and save it.
It's a cool house. Tried, good-looking house.
There's a good story behind that one.
Yeah, sure.
I actually had a friend that was trying to purchase the house before, and I told him, "Well, she wanna take it down." So, I already had known, and she called me, and she was very excited about renovating it, and I said, "I have some bad news for you. The house that you bought, we will not be renovating."
Yeah.
So...
Well, so I'm gonna move, um, to close, twenty-five, twenty-six, Hale Brothers Construction, ten North Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Reverend Z, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
And a move that the board grant, uh, vote to grant the petitioner's application for a special permit, subject to the conditions, this project will require compliance with the flood plain bylaw, a demolition permit, a building permit, final as-built certificate of occupancy, um, based on the finding that the applicant's proposal to raise the existing dwelling and construct a new eighteen-foot by thirty-two-foot, two-and-a-half-story dwelling with an eleven-foot by eighteen-foot porch, a four-foot-six by forty-three-foot deck, a four-foot by fourteen-foot deck, and a three-foot by ten-foot deck on the property located at ten North Street, as shown on the site plan, ten North Street assessors' map, N-zero-seven, N zero seven block zero one, lot thirty-eight, Marshfield, Massachusetts, for, um, Joanne O'Donohue, dated on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five by Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, Dana Altavello P E, an elevation sketch, floor plans not dated or stamped, meets the special permit criteria, section ten twelve of the bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Reverend Z, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have, uh, twenty-five oh two, Celiberty Real T L L C, looking to extend. When are we, when are we going? We're gonna have to go further with these people.
May twenty-seventh.
What's that?
May twenty-seventh.
Aren't we pretty busy on May twenty-seventh?
Yeah. They also have another hearing that night, too.
They have another hearing with us? All right.
For Texas Street.
Celiberty does?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Morse does.
Yeah, but this one is, um, I'm gonna push.
Right.
To the meeting after that.
But he, they requested the twenty-seventh, I can.
Well, the twenty-seventh's very busy, if, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Uh, Chairman Murphy and Nancy, do you know where we stand in terms of our deadline with them?
They're extending, so they're gonna sign.
They.
An extension.
Have they done that?
They will, if they, right Nancy? We've already extended that. They signed the extensions.
They've requested extensions.
Right.
Oh, but they haven't signed an extension agreement, no.
They haven't signed, they haven't requested a variance, though, right?
No, they have a variance.
There's a variance request pending.
On, that's the second one.
They have a hundred days to act from the date of the filing.
That's why I think we ought to get something in writing from them.
Yep, I will get to that, yeah.
They agree to that extension.
All right. So you're gonna get that, Nancy? That, I'm doing the first one, the non-variants, the special permit. So twenty-five oh two.
They're kinda consolidated, so you really just need the extension.
All right, so twenty-five oh two Celiberty.
Special permit, you're fine, but the variance, you have to take final action within a hundred days.
Right. So we need an extension from them. That's twenty-five oh two A. And move them to, when's the next meeting? July ninth?
July seventh?
July.
Oh, no, we have, um, two in June.
All right, so when?
July tenth and July twenty-fourth.
June.
Sorry, June, June tenth.
So move them to June tenth.
Okay.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Reverend Z, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
All right. Now we have, we already did the commerce, and we have Nick Druzoopoulos in formal discussion regarding upcoming project. Come on up. All right, just name an address for the record.
Steve Druzoopoulos, Holly Road?
No.
Nicholas Druzoopoulos, Ames Way?
Dave Druzoopoulos, Holly Road.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Good. Good evening. Appreciate you, everyone taking us, giving us the time.
Sure.
For this, um, I think we all can agree in this room that Brant Rock obviously needs quite the makeover down there. And, um, this is an opportunity that we would like to bring to the town of Marshfield. Um, we, I kinda wanted to, we wanted to get the, the view of, of the board, uh, generally how they feel about, uh, what we want to have planned down there. Unfortunately, with the raised parking, uh, it makes the project almost impossible to have down there. Um, and unfortunately, um, where it's written in the, in the bylaw, that wasn't presented by the town, I just wanted to remind the board or be, have the board aware that that was just an amendment, uh, a few years ago on the floor, so that was never created by the town. Um, so we're hoping to have support from the zoning board for some relief on that.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Yeah.
Sure. Please speak up.
My apologies. That's a lot better.
It's, it's that I, I don't have great hearing.
Nope, that's fine. So, uh, we, we're hoping that we, uh, could have some support from the board in regards to the, um, the raised parking. We're looking to have some ground parking, um, and build the project down there. We're developing over two hundred additional parking spaces down at Brant Rock.
Where, where would these parking spots be?
They would be underneath the project itself.
What project?
The project that we're, that.
I'm sorry, I, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay. So down in Brant Rock, we're looking to build a, a multi-use facility down in Brant Rock, more of like a boardwalk aspect, where it's gonna be.
When you say, when you say multi-use, mixed use?
Mixed use, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Where it'd be retail on the first floor.
Yeah.
And we'll have residential, uh, on the second and third floor.
Okay.
Okay. And currently, right now, it's written in the bylaw that we need to have elevated, uh, raised parking.
Parking that's flood residence, like flood.
Outside.
Sorry?
Outside.
It's gotta be elevated above the flood zone, so you're looking at twelve to fourteen feet near.
Correct.
Well, it's the, it's the bylaw.
Well, you can use the helicopter to.
Yeah. So unfortunately, with the raised parking, it nearly makes, uh, the project impossible.
Or any worlds of.
Or any other development in, in Brant Rock. Not just this particular project, but any project down in Brant Rock, unfortunately. We would like to move.
I'm sorry, what size would this proposed building or buildings be?
It would, can you zoom in on that? I'm not sure if you can.
Well, we are looking to, uh, we have a hundred and twenty-two thousand square foot lot. Uh, it's from. This lot here?
Yeah. So it'd be, uh, from, from this point here to soccer paths here from that point. Including your Venus building? Yes. Yep, at that point.
So in terms of the size of this lot.
Mm-hmm.
How much is upland that you can, you can build in or fill?
So, um, I don't know the exact number on that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna hold you to anything.
Okay.
Oh. Yeah, you guys, they can't hear you on the audio.
Sorry about that. I was asking, I was asking about the, uh, relative, uh, size of the upland on the lot, and it's ballpark twenty-five to thirty percent of the frontage that abuts the existing parking area. Is that fair to say?
Sure.
Yes. So Bob, for the, uh, the zone down there, what, explain to us what is allowed.
You can do an all commercial project or an all residential project without an elevated parking deck, but if you wanna do a mixed use parking, the Bravo District requires an elevated parking deck. Um, an elevated parking deck is one where the base flood elevation is below the level where you park, so that's what they're talking about. And, um, it's the mixed use project that actually triggers the requirement. So, um, you know, this was the, kind of the hot debate at town meeting.
Yeah.
So, um, town meeting did not support the request to negate that requirement. So, um, it, it remains a requirement for a mixed use project in the Brant Rock overlay district.
So the options would be residential or commercial?
All commercial, all residential.
Or second floor being parking garage?
Yeah.
There are potentially other options, but I'm not sure that's something we should be getting into.
Okay. Go ahead. Come up to the podium, you gotta name an address.
So Eric Murphy, Ocean Street, I'm a direct abouter to this building, uh, it's right across the street from me. Um, what they were looking for is to put two hundred parking spaces on ground level in a flood zone that floods at least waist deep once a year. They brought it up to town meeting, they needed fifty percent of the vote, and it lost by nine tenths of a vote overwhelmingly. So to say that this is the only way to do it is, is wrong. Another problem is that they're claiming that anybody in Brant Rock can't build unless they do a elevated parking. Not true. It is only one property that is, any property that is ten thousand square feet or more that is gonna be mixed use, residential and business. There's only one piece of property in Brant Rock that is ten thousand square feet or more right now, and it's the one they're requesting to build two hundred parking spaces on the dirt in a flood zone. That was voted down nine tenths at town. So it's not for the whole neighborhood. You can build houses, you can build businesses. You wanna combine them, you gotta tell the people in the business on the third floor that, hey, at two o'clock in the morning, it floods three feet deep, and you better get up and move your car, because we've seen cars six, seven, eight, nine, ten down there, uh, two, three years in a row. I myself have rescued people in a canoe. Um, I've actually had to call the emergency operations center and have them send down a bulldozer to pick someone up, not who lived there, but someone who drove into the four feet of water, not realizing that it was flooded. So to say that you're gonna park two hundred cars on lifts in an area that floods, anybody that's had a gas grill near the beach knows, two years, you're throwing in the trash and buying another one. They don't last. So this is just moot. It's already been voted at town meeting down, and I say no.
Thank you.
I just wanna ask, uh, the, the zoning board, we know, uh, Marshfield is, uh, right at that ten percent, uh, threshold with the forty B.
We are. We're at ten point two, and we'll be at ten point six with the, uh, bridle trail.
Right. Uh, you know, with the next census coming up, and, uh, Governor Healy really, uh, trying to push suburbs to twelve percent, um, with her new bill, um, I'm just asking the board if they would rather, uh, see a proposed chapter forty B down in this area.
Well, we're, we're compliant until basically twenty thirty-two. So hopefully by that, we'll meet the, um, glam, which is the land area. We're very close on that as well, which means that we're protected in perpetuity. So we're hoping with, you know, C B C funding, purchasing land, we'll make it to that number. Once that happens, we're actually, we become what's known as a friendly forty B.
Bob, this was, uh, so instead of their, their mixed use, if it was residential, three-story large long building, is that residential, or is that, yeah, that would be considered residential?
They can, they can build a, they can build a all residential project there and have ground floor parking, an all commercial project, and have ground floor.
I, you know, I understand the appeal of mixed use, but that's not the location for it. So, uh, from the sounds of it, um, and I didn't watch it live, town meeting was resounding in their desire that, uh, this be residential or commercial, but not both.
Well, the town did vote in two thousand fourteen to make this area mixed use area.
Well, yes, mixed use, but with the caveat that if you're going to have mixed use, the parking has to be.
No.
In the sky.
Not in two thousand fourteen. Not in two thousand fourteen, no.
The subsequent vote of town meeting.
Yeah. Right. The, the state nor the federal government require parking to be elevated.
Well, Marshfield does.
But we only, we only require it on that one mixed use.
The one, yeah.
You can build a commercial.
This one area out of the whole town is being punished.
I understand, but that's, that's.
Okay.
That was the will of the town, you know, we, we can't change that.
From the sounds of it, and I, again, I'm just repeating what I heard, it's not the whole town that's being punished, it's just your lot.
Well, it's, it's the Brant Rock.
Three of you that are being punished.
The Brant Rock overlay district is being punished.
It's not just them, there's, there's abandoned buildings elsewhere.
Yeah.
There are other ten thousand square foot lots?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected.
That's why Brant Rock is the way it is, because nobody wants to invest in it.
Well, you can invest in it.
You can, if you just want.
As though it's a, it's a moral.
Mixed, mixed use is.
Residential.
Sure.
You can do.
Just commercial.
Commercial.
Right.
But, you know, your customers in a, you know, quarter mile radius, half of them are gonna be fish. So, you know, residential, there's a huge demand for residential. I, and I've been astounded at projects that, residential projects, like, who's ever gonna wanna live there? There was a former dump in Situate, a, a military base that had, was loaded with all kinds of funky stuff. And everyone in Situate was like, oh, it's a toxic waste site, it's a toxic waste site. Well, they developed at Pulte, Pulte or Toll Brothers, some national developer. Houses are selling for a million, two million. Everybody, all the townies were like, who's ever gonna wanna live there? The answer is everybody. And those houses have sold, some of them have sold twice or three times, and they're selling in the millions of dollars. You seem to think that your only choice is what you're thinking of right now, and I'm, I'm confident, put pen to paper with your consultants and engineers, they'll come up with something that will be very successful. And there's, there's a huge demand for housing, not just in Brant Rock, but in the northeast. And, and people are gonna wanna live. It, this is a beautiful place to live.
I, I agree with you one hundred percent. We, we have many options. You know, we have been business owners in this town for fifty years. We believe Brant Rock runs because of its commercial properties. But it, again, it's become more seasonal and seasonal, you need traffic down there, and with mixed use, it can be a vibrant area like Situate. Situate is thriving right now because they have mixed use. You have new businesses, you have beautiful residents, nobody complains about that, and the town is making money, t- taxpaying money.
I, I beg to differ on the nobody complains element of your sentence, but yes, I, I agree with everything else you said.
So, I mean, this is basically, you know, you came in for a general discussion, but this is a planning board issue, it's, it's actually not our thing.
Well, well, in terms of, uh, in terms of relief or variance, would.
You'd have to present something.
Correct.
We, we would have something to look at.
Correct.
Yes.
And I would urge you to consult with a knowledgeable zoning attorney who will tell you that you do not likely meet the standard for the granting of a variance. The standard for the granting, the standard for the granting of a variance is extraordinarily high. And according to the S J C, should only be granted sparingly when no other alternative is available. You have lots of alternatives. You may not like them, but that does not mean that you don't have them.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, if, if the building is, say there's three buildings on the property, one building's commercial, the other two are residential, does that create the mixed use?
Nope.
No.
They can, uh, they could do a lot with ten thousand square feet, commercial, they could do the next one residential, they could do the next one commercial, and the next one residential. They probably, how mu- how many acres of land do you guys have down there?
Hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet.
So the lots have to be ten thousand square feet. I know there's some wetlands, so there may be some in, issues there, but you could divide the lot into commercial, residential, commercial, residential, commercial, residential.
I don't think anyone's against the, I live down there as well, it's a mess on that side of the street.
Sure.
I, I, I think everyone wants to see something good happen there.
They do have some non-conforming uses down there, too.
Yeah.
And, you know, the bylaws are, in Marshfield, pretty forgiving and lenient about non-conforming uses. You can convert one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use.
I mean, we understand that, uh, there is a lot of options, but, uh, just developing something to the area, uh, growing up in the area, having the business in the area, just a beautiful aesthetic of a nice boardwalk for people to come down and, and just come to an area of Marshfield, to walk along, to go into all the retail spaces, um, was something that we would just wanted to bring to Marshfield, to, to bring to a whole, a whole different light to, to Brant Rock.
I, I think that's fantastic, and I applaud you for your investment in, in the town. I think it's, I think it's great, but you just, you can't do everything that you wanna do all the time. Sometimes you've gotta compromise. And again, I, I would urge you to consult with a knowledgeable zoning attorney, a knowledgeable engineer and designer who can come up with something that would get approved. Time is money. We've, we've had other folks that are in front of us that are butting heads with us because they think they're entitled to a variance, and they're not, and it's costing their, their project valuable time. You can't dig until you've got your permits and the appeal period has expired. The idea is to get shovels in the ground sooner rather than later.
Well, that's why we're here. Sure. We understand, we very well, time is money.
This board works with applicants. The building commissioner, Andrew, is phenomenal in the time that he gives to people so that it stream, streamlines the process. We're a board that is looking to encourage development in the town of Marshfield within the bounds of the law. And what you're doing is, is from, in my opinion, is pushing the bounds of the law in terms of what we can just approve. You can seek a special permit, as, as Bob mentioned, you've got some pre-existing non-conforming uses that can be altered. That's, this is where a, a lawyer can come in and give you some advice. Here's what you can do, here's what you, you have a right to do, here's what maybe is, is the best way to go. And like I said, time is money. here's what maybe is, is the best way to go. And like I said, time is money. But again, thank you for coming to us now and getting our feedback.
Appreciate the time, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right, so now we have Nancy, eighteen sixty-three, Michael.
LaVon Lato.
LaVon Lato. Twenty-four Brighton Street, petition requests a one-year extension to June eighth, twenty twenty-six for a special permit granted on September twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, meeting during, uh, due to financial resources, design delays, transfer of ownership, and difficulty securing a contractor.
Move to grant the extension?
Second, all in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Enzio.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
Uh, approval of minutes, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Oh, sorry, that, that's Larry's business.
Right.
Um, all in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Enzio.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
Now, um, Grover, you wanted to discuss the generators, yes, no?
Um, I've done some research. First of all, do you guys have any opinions on, on what we talked about last time? On, uh, when a generator can run, if, if we're overstepping backwards.
So were you talking about, so this is the only thing, only question I had is, were you talking about when a generator can run or when did that test cycle come on?
The test, the test cycle.
Right, 'cause if it, if we put limits on the time when it can run, then.
No, that should, I think that should be.
People's meat are gonna go bad.
As an emergency.
Yeah. It's interesting, where, 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 I was a firefighter at one time, we actually required all emergency systems to be tested relatively simultaneously within a two-hour period between eleven and one on Wednesdays.
Yeah, that's what we have right now, I mean, pretty much. Andrew, can you, uh, can you hear us?
No, you. Before it comes back, I, I've done, I've done a little research on it.
Yeah.
None, none of the surrounding towns have any, any restrictions. There's some stuff in Gloucester and Cambridge, um, but outside of that, there's, there really isn't much guidance on it. Personal research I've done, I have one or two every single day around my house.
Wow.
If you guys put this in a zoning bylaw, everybody that's already got a gen- generator is not bound by.
No, I agree.
They're all grandfathered in.
I know, it's a little, little late to the jump, but I also, in the last year, have watched before I get put in.
Well, I mean, I have one at my house, because I thought it was a good idea, 'cause we were losing power for five days at a time.
Yeah.
For a couple of years.
Yep.
And like, mine will run for fifteen minutes every Saturday to recharge it.
What time?
Noon time on a Saturday.
Yeah, so I think Grover was thinking between eleven and one.
My, my thought was.
What happens when the power goes out and it runs twenty-four hours?
Oh, that, that's, that's fine, it's only, it's only the test cycle.
I'm, I'm worried about the test cycle, so like.
I think if you're gonna propose it, you should propose it as a general bylaw, therefore there's no grandfather protection. Because otherwise, it's not gonna apply to anybody that has a generator already, and how do you would? I, I like Andrew, but Andrew's gonna become the generator.
Enforcer.
Oh, he's got nothing to do.
Come on, Andrew.
He's just lying solitaire all day.
I understand, Grover, you're just, there's, there is, there's.
I, I have, say, say I have, I literally have fifteen abotters in all fifteen.
Candy crush.
So it's, and they're running at different times, every day of the week, so it's just, one of those things I know.
But I think if you wanna have an effective regulation, you don't put it in the zoning bylaw because it's too many people, it won't apply, it won't apply to anybody that's already got a generator. So if you wanna put a generator like this in that test cycle scheduled at some time, it'd be better done by a general bylaw, so it applies to everybody and there's no grandfather.
I'd be all in favor of that.
What, the general bylaw?
Put it, put in the general bylaw.
I mean, I think we, we get these in front of us, we could condition in the future of people that come. You wouldn't have to do anything if it was a general bylaw, 'cause it would just be the law that everybody's required to. But who writes the general bylaw, someone would have to present it. Anyone, a citizen could do it. We have a noise ordinance in town, and it usually applies to amplified sound, but there's no reason why you couldn't add a subsection three dealing with generator noise.
If only we had a, an attorney.
I mean, there's some towns that have those restrictions on, you can't use a two-stroke engine on a, uh, on a trimmer during the day.
You gotta remember, what brought this forward though, with, with Grover, was the fact that they were elevated now. The houses were closed and they're being built up on a deck, they're on ground level.
We had two in the last two meetings where they're, they're raising it and then putting it in a bizarre spot.
You people, when you're granting an approval for a special permit and you find out that there's a generator and it's an elevated generator. We could restrict that. Put a condition on there that the test cycle shall be scheduled, you know, between the hours of ten and two on a weekend. So we can do that. Just, and you put it as a condition and. Yeah. That would be perfectly enforced.
Not a weekend.
Bob, Bob's absolutely right on that, like, you guys have the ability to, to put that special condition in there, especially because we have a condition about dimensional regulations for floodproofing for, you know, a, um, like, a, a, well, it says like a cabinet or whatever for, like, an enclosure for, for elevated equipment. It's not necessarily a deck, but it does say that that enclosure cannot be within five feet of the, of the, um, of the lot line. So, I mean, you, you definitely have the ability to add, you know, some restrictions as a caveat of a special permit.
So that's good, we can do that in the future.
So from this point forward, we have the ability of, of doing as you brought forward. See, I'd never even thought of this, in fact, it never affects me.
Yeah, just the house is just so tight down there.
Yeah, maybe when you brought it up and elevated, and you're seeing five feet from the lot line, well, you're five feet away. That means the generator is cycling off whatever time, ten feet away.
No, I think it's a good thing, especially that noisy thing down on Plymouth Ave, um, that old one that runs all the time in the, in the sewer building down there. But no, so I think in the future, that's a good thing to, you know, we're aware of that now, and we can address that, so. And just so the board's up to speed on the, um, modeling work for the, um, environmental partners, we just got the most recent email. I'll get that over to you, Nancy, to update, um, on the site. They ran the, cleaned up the test on, the water test. So we're, uh, looking to do a joint board meeting between the ZBA, the Board of Selectmen, I mean, the Select Board and, uh, the, uh, EPW. So hopefully gonna get that all addressed.
When will that be?
I, it's up to them, uh, uh, they just, environmental partners just notified us. If I'm right, Bob, it looks like it's all done, so we're ready to discuss it.
Okay.
It looks, I mean, the, the test came out even honestly worse than the first round, once they tightened everything up. But, you know, it's, it, it's all hypothetical, so.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we ready to adjourn? I did. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, my name's Neil Duffy, seventeen Bryan's Lane, Brant Rock. I'm here because, uh, I'm a, I'm a, a butter of the Jettie restaurant. And, um, before COVID, my neighbors and I lived in a really quiet neighborhood. It was great during the day. At night it was a little noisy, but, you know, we bought houses next to a restaurant, so you gotta expect that. Uh, and since COVID, there's been an outdoor entertainment circus, really our concert venue. And it's supposed to be a thirty-five foot buffer zone, and it's really been reduced to zero. The, the bandstand sets up right at the zero foot line, right at the residential neighborhood. And it's been incredibly disruptive to my neighborhood. Uh, and we've, myself, my neighbors, we've, you know, we're not the type of people, I said this to the Select Board last night, we're not the type of people who complain to the police about loud music or, or lights, or even rats. We, we write, we write to the proprietor, and we have, and I've got a binder here with dozens, literally dozens of correspondence from myself and my neighbors, asking the proprietor, Rich Vaughn, to be a better neighbor, to turn the music down, to redirect his lights so they're not shining in our windows, to, to do something about the rat problem. And he's pretty much ignored us all along, for the last five years. So I'm, I'm pleading, is there a way we can reinstate the thirty-five foot buffer zone? It's, it's, it, it applies to every business in the town, except apparently this one. The other thing that, that's, uh, I, I just need to bring, bring up is, I think there's a notification issue. About five or six years ago, the Jettie was putting a patio behind the building, and, and we weren't notified. The butters weren't notified, we, we missed the meeting, and it, it dragged off for quite a long time, and it really, it was a legal issue that really didn't have to be. And, and then recently, uh, there's a new patio, there's a patio that, it's at the location where the handicap parking was, just to the right of the entrance. Well, that was installed, and none of us were informed about that either, so it seems like the butters of this restaurant never get informed of anything.
Well, I'm sorry, but what does this have to do with the zoning board tonight?
Well, I'm getting to that. Thank you. Uh, the zoning board is, uh, recently I've heard that, uh, the entire parking lot is, is, is no longer a parking lot. That it's been somehow been, uh, re-categorizes anything but a parking lot.
So let me just ask, Andrew, is this the item that is the new thing that the Board of Select, the Select Board is handling through the state?
Uh, as far as I understand it, yes.
Okay, so the Select Board is, they did this, you're talking about the outdoor seating that Patty, what you're talking about.
The parking.
Isn't under our charge anymore, it's the, the Select Board is in charge of that.
Okay, my understanding is.
That's why.
I just thought it was a zoning board thing.
No, it, it used to be, but the state with this outdoor seating thing, from what I understand, from what Andrew's told us, is now done through the Select Board, and we, we weren't notified of that, so. That's, whatever you're seeing never came to us because it, it doesn't come to us anymore, it goes to them.
I, all right, I just, I just thought it was a zoning issue.
Would that be a site plan approval?
No, we don't, Andrew, can, can you explain this? This is something that the state did during COVID, and then.
Exactly, I, Bob would be able to explain it better.
Okay, well, he left, but this is, if, if you wanna write Andrew or us, and then we'll get the answer through Bob for you, but I believe everything you're talking about is currently done.
Can I just say something real quick?
Sure.
I feel like Neil, Neil contacts me all the time. He, I got an email from him today. I gave him information prior to this meeting. I responded to numerous requests for enforcement. We've been here before, we've had, you know, the, he, he had a lawsuit against them on the site plan approval that was issued because of the fact that he wasn't properly notified. And he's involved in it dressed over, for years. The issue now is, I, I, as I understand it, from what Bob has told me, that the, the, the ABCC and the state changed their regulations, and they can extend the, the, the seating that happened during COVID, uh, into this area without zoning board appeals approval. But I don't, that's not within my purview, so I, I can't explain it anymore beyond that.
All right, well, I'm learning, I'm learning something tonight.
Right, I don't think, well, we learned about it a while ago, it's just, it's no longer in, under our control.
Okay.
I believe it's the Board of, the Select Board, but you would have to ask Attorney Yeldon.
Okay, and lastly, it's just the, uh, the handicap parking that, uh, it just bothers me. I have a lot, a number of friends who are handicapped, and when I see handicap parking that's just, uh, uh, just non-compliant, i- it bothers me. It's supposed to be sixteen feet wide, it's supposed to be striped, uh, it's supposed to be, well, signed, it's supposed to be a firm surface. Uh, it's supposed to be closest parking space to the entrance of the facility. And right now, the one that's there now is being blocked by a telephone pole, it's on dirt, uh, it's not sixteen feet wide, it's not striped. And it's just, it's just something I like to see, you know, taken care of.
Again, I, I don't believe we have, we don't have jurisdiction in this anymore. So, the ADA would be, you'd have to, you know, I don't believe that's ours. Whatever they've done, you'd have to report them, if there is a violation, it would have to be addressed.
I ju- I just didn't know where to go, go with this. It's all right, well, thank you, uh, thank you, gentlemen.
So I remember when the liquor license was originally granted down there at the lobster tail, there was X amount of off-screen parking that was required for that business.
That's right.
For the liquor license, for the amount of seating and whatnot that was there.
But this is the extension to COVID, this is what happened.
COVID extension, it's pretty much eliminated all parking, they virtually have no public parking.
It's kinda like what's going on in Boston.
But as you know, Brant Rock needs more parking, not less.
I understand that.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you, gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And ladies, of course.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Who's saying it? Motion?
Motion adjourned.
There we go, second.
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian, you aye?
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Enzio.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.